Good evening and welcome to our Glendale City Council meeting. If you would like to speak on any of the items that are on the agenda, please fill out a gold card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name, and when it's your turn to speak, you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you would like to talk about an item that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give that one to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District, Councilmember Diana Guzman of the Yucca District, Councilmember Leandro Baldinegro of the Acatillo District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Barrell District, Councilmember Ray Malnar of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lupe Conchas of the Cactus District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages, as well as the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting for October 28th, 2025. This meeting is called to order. I'd like to note that the mayor's absence is excused this evening, and I'll conduct an attendance roll call. Councilmember, please signify by saying present. Councilmember Baldinegro?
Present.
Councilmember Conchas?
Present.
Are you sure? Okay. Councilmember Guzman? Councilmember Malnar?
Present.
Councilmember Turner, and I'm present. The next item on the agenda is invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Today's invocation will be delivered by Reverend Von Magnin with the Arizona Buddhist Temple. Will you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilmember Malnar will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, friends. On behalf of the Arizona Buddhist Temple, I'd like to thank the city for inviting us to come and share a little bit about our faith and an invocation this evening. Just real quick, if you do not know, the Arizona Buddhist Temple was formed over 92 years ago. And since 1936, it's been located roughly off 43rd Avenue and Indian School, but its first three years was here in the city of Glendale on Yamamoto Farms, back in the day when it was the 18th Lateral and Zero Avenue, which I understand was around 59th Avenue Northern. So I'll go ahead and begin. Serving one's community as an elected official or a professional civil servant is both rewarding and challenging. It is a high calling that only a few answer. I'm confident that those who serve understand that the decisions made in these chambers have a tremendous impact on countless people and across generations. Therefore, I invite all of us to reflect on the teachings from the Buddha that are universal across time and space and across all cultures and faith traditions. May everyone be happy and safe, and may their hearts be filled with joy. May all living beings live in security and in peace. Beings who are frail or strong, tall or short, big or small, visible or not visible, near or far away, already born or yet to be born, may all of them dwell in perfect tranquility. Let no one do harm to anyone. Let no one put the life of anyone in danger. Let no one, out of anger or ill will, wish anyone any harm. I will now offer a brief aspiration composed over 1,400 years ago by a highly admired Buddhist master. I'll chant this aspiration in ancient Chinese. The chant acknowledges that as humans, we need guidance in our lives. Guidance from boundless wisdom and compassion. Guidance from revered and sacred teachings, and guidance from our fellow community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Magnin. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 14th, 2025 voting meeting. Do we have a motion?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the council approve the minutes for the October 14th, 2025 voting meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Councilmember Malnar, do we have any appointments to recommend this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I move to make the following appointment. Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board, Mr. Rick St. John, to a term expiring January 31st, 2026.
Okay, did you say second? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. That motion carries. Mr. St. John, I told you don't want to come up here in front of everyone and be sworn in. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are routine in nature, have been previously stuttered in your previous council workshop. They're intended to be acted upon in one motion by council. Do we have any speaker cards, Ms. Bauer?
No, ma'am.
Okay, do we have? And nobody wants to hear any items separately? Okay, do we have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda items three through 18.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda items three through 18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent Agenda passes. Next item is Consent Resolutions. Ms. Bauer, will you please read Consent Resolutions 19 through 23 by number and title?
Item 19, Resolution Number R 25-104, a resolution of council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an infrastructure cost-sharing agreement with Woodside Home Sales AZ LLC. Item 20, Resolution Number R 25-105, a resolution of council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix for the Thunderbird Park Water Connection. Item 21, Resolution Number R 25-106, a resolution of council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement with Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of securing the city's grant award in the approximate amount of $188,418 for the Glendale Police and Fire Departments for personnel expenses related to certain training drills and exercises. Item 22, Resolution Number R 25-107, a resolution of council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a subgrant agreement number 2025-211 with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Victims of Crime Act Victim Assistance Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $263,311, and approving matching funds in the amount of $65,828 for the Glendale Police Department Crime Victim Services Project. Item 23, Resolution Number R 25-108, a resolution of council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a subgrant agreement number 2025-210 with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Victims of Crime Act Victim Assistance Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $105,413, and approving matching funds in the amount of $26,353 for the Glendale Police Department Victim Assistance Crisis Intervention After Hours Project. And that concludes the Consent Resolutions.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Does anybody have any questions or want to hear an item separately? Okay, do we have a motion? No?
Vice Mayor, there it goes. Thank you, guys. Vice Mayor, I move for Consent Resolutions approval from 19 to 23.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Right. Next item on the agenda is item number 24, Land Development Actions. This is a public hearing only. We will not be voting on this. This is a blank annexation application. Ms. Bauer, can you please introduce item number 24?
Reams and Myrtle Industrial AN-271, annexation of 8.5 acres located at the northwest corner of Reams Road and Myrtle Avenue. Public hearing required.
Public hearing now open.
Vice Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report on the public hearing will be Alex Lerma, Senior Planner Development Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Vice Mayor, council. Good evening. The item before you was presented at the August 26th, 2025 City Council Workshop, in which council provided consensus to proceed forward with his request. The item consists of an 8.5 acre property located at the northwest corner of Reams Road and Myrtle Avenue. The site is approximately 12 miles west of City Hall. The property is currently in Maricopa County with a zoning classification of RU43, which allows for single-family residential dwelling units. To the property being annexed into the city limits, the most compatible-lig zoning district applicable would be the RU43, which is Rule Residence 45, which also allows for single-family residential dwelling units. Once incorporated, the applicant intends to rezone the property to planned area development to allow for industrial land uses. The annexation map depicts a property hatched with a red arrow. The property to the east and south are currently being used, or property that are currently within the city of Glendale municipal limits. The properties directly north and west are in unaccompanied area. Through the project's development plan, the site access is proposed along Reams Road, which is a street that's maintained by the city of Glendale. The subject property is currently vacant. Properties to the east and south are currently being used for industrial use and are identified with a planned area development zoning classification. The properties to the north and west are outside of the municipal limits and are currently being used for low-density single-family residence. Vice Mayor, council concludes my presentation. And as a reminder to council, this is a public hearing to give the public the opportunity to provide feedback in the public hearing setting. No council action is required.
Thank you, Mr. Lerma. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Bauer, do we have any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? That being said, public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Lerma. All right, next item on the agenda, ordinances. Ms. Bauer, will you read item number 25 by title?
Ordinance Number O 25-44, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a water and sewer easement in favor of Liberty Utilities, Litchfield Park Water and Sewer Corp. and Valley Utilities Water Company, Inc., directly west of 7510 North Dicehart Road, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Vice Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report this evening is Georgie Pavlovich, Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm here to present ordinance Number O 25-44, authorizing the execution of the water and sewer easement in favor of Liberty Utilities, which is a literal park water and sewer corporation, and Valley Utilities Water Company. This location of this, the easement, is 7510 North Dicehart Road. The purpose and review of this one is that this ordinance allows the city of Glendale to grant a sewer easement to Liberty Utilities and water easement to Valley Utilities along city-owned right-of-way adjacent to the parcel. Both utilities have coordinated to install their respective lines within the same easement area to support ongoing and future development in this part of Glendale. These installation will help ensure that new projects in the area have the proper water and sewer infrastructure to proceed, which is also help with any future development for the city of Glendale in that area. A little bit of the background, the city owns the channel and the right-of-way adjacent to the site. Liberty Utilities and Valley Utilities each submitted requests for their easements, and both companies have agreed to one another's language and placement to avoid any conflicts. Staff reviewed and proposed the proposed easements and confirmed that there will be no operational or service impacts on the city department as a result of these granting these easements. We recommend approval of ordinance Number O 25-44 to formalize the easement agreement and direct the city clerk to record their documents with the Maricopa County. This also supports the city's strategic plan, Tier One objective, improve asset management, since we will be ensuring utility infrastructure is properly recorded, maintained, and coordinated with future growth. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlovich. Does anybody have any questions? No questions from the council. Any speaker cards, Ms. Bauer? Nobody here to speak on this item? Okay, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance O 25-44 and waive reading beyond the title.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote. Councilmember Baldinegro?
Aye.
Councilmember Conchas?
Aye.
Councilmember Guzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnar?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pavlovich. Next on the agenda, council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Baldinegro?
None at this time.
Councilmember Conchas?
Yes, Vice Mayor. First, I want to congratulate our mayor on the completion of the Great American Flag Tour this Saturday. I also want to thank all of the folks who made the Casa Colota senior apartment homes possible, all of the city staff, the council, former council members as well that were part of getting that done, and also the state and the county governments for also helping with financing. Also, I want to congratulate all of the city employees that received awards from the Success Factor Awards. Thank you very much for all of the hard work that you do in terms of, some folks saved the city millions of dollars, some folks made sure that there wasn't a gas leak or a potential explosion. So it was really great to hear all of the ways that our city employees go above and beyond, and just want to thank them for all of their support. And the last thing I'll mention is, thank you to everyone in the Cactus District who came out to Neo Mama Kitchens on Saturday morning for the grand opening, for the meet and greet with myself, the councilman. We had well over 200 people there, and it was really a great event, and it was really just an awesome community time for everybody to get together and support a small business. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Guzman?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have a few things. First, I would like to thank Bethany Horizons, Tessera, and the Rovi Farms Communities in the Yucca District for your outstanding game event on Saturday, the 18th. You are all very gracious to me and my husband, so thank you again. And this Saturday, November the 1st, is Hook a Kid on Fishing Event over in my district this time. It's going to start at 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Heroes Park, which is at 6075 North 83rd Avenue. The cross streets are 83rd Avenue and Bethany. And I will be trying to redeem myself from the loss that I had against Councilmember Baldinegro. Of course, we didn't actually catch a fish. He won by beating me in a kart race, go-kart race at Androtti's. So this time, though, we both have to catch a fish, okay? Yes. No, we're not doing that. The other thing I want to do announce again is, on November the 8th, I will be having the first-ever Glendale Holiday Tamale Festival at Westgate. Want to invite everybody out. You know tamales are the holiday cuisine of the Southwest, so invite your family and friends over. We should have a really good time. Should be a lot of fun, good food. And like I said before, the mayor will be judging the tamale tasting contest, so that should be fun. And let's see, did I miss anything? Oh, the shred event on November the 15th. I know that the little flyers went out to everybody in the Yucca District. I didn't see on there, though, they included the batteries. I just wanted to remind people that they could bring your batteries. We will dispose of them also. And finally, I would like to wish my husband a happy anniversary. Tomorrow, we will celebrate 43 years.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Guzman. Councilmember Malnar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Last weekend, we had a very successful Grenada State's Community Halloween event. I want to thank several of the departments, the Glendale Community Service Department, the Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, and Transportation for their support. Special thanks to Alan Bartmioli from Faith Bible Church, and many volunteers who made this happen. And a very special thanks to my council assistant, Mayla Acosta, who was instrumental in coordinating all this successful event. We had 53 volunteers, 15 staff, and about 400 in attendance, so it was really well-attended. On October 9th, I had my first fall district neighborhood meeting in the Choya Desert Palms area. And I want to thank, again, the PD, code compliance, engineering, park, and recreation, city manager's office for attending. Had a good turnout, a lot of good questions that came up, and had a lot of good staff there to support and provide answers. My next neighborhood district meeting will be specifically for residents who live north of Cactus and south of Thunderbird, between 51st and 67th. However, all Saguaro District residents are invited, but I do do regional district meetings now where I invite specific neighborhoods. And we'd like to have anyone who'd like to attend. It'll be held on Thursday, November 6th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Desert Valley Elementary School at 12901 North 63rd Avenue. You know, various departments there to address any concerns that the public might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Malnar. Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple mentions, I'd like to thank Holly Van der Maatde from the Golden Ridge and Morningstar Living Neighborhood in my district for the invitation to join them for game night last week. And also in the Ocalo Neighborhood, Valerie Del Rosario and Phil Noelk that had me come there. Very happy that the turnout for both of those and the support from the city departments, police, fire, the drone, lots of different things were going on. Our residents were quite impressed, as was I. And then I'd also like to thank local entrepreneur and downtown business owner, Martine Sanchez. Martine's been hosting a family fun festival for the several months in downtown Glendale. Took a break during the heat of the summer, but had one just last Saturday here over right next door in the lot, and had thousands of people turn out for music, for cars, for food booths. It started at 5:00, and by 9:00 o'clock, every single food booth had sold out of food. It was so busy, and everybody, of course, was very happy with it. The band was great, the turnout was excellent, and I think the cleanup was superior. So it's the kind of thing, that's the activity we want to see in downtown. And I know my residents, just a few blocks north, all the way up through my district, I saw several of them down there during the course of the day. And I know that my residents enjoy it, and I think residents from all over Glendale do as well, so thank you for that and continued, much continued success for you, sir. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. I do have a couple of things. I'd like to thank, I won't mention her by name, but the president of Arrowhead Ranch Phase 2 for hosting this year's game event in the Choya District. And I'd also like to thank our public safety personnel, all of this public safety personnel, but specifically the leadership that showed up on game night. I think it really sends a big message to the community when you, you know, the chief of police is outgoing, attending game events, and I know our fire chief, I believe, was out attending events in the community. It says a lot about the leadership of our public safety departments, that they're, they understand the importance of being there and engaging on that kind of level, personal level with residents. So it was a big success. Hopefully, we can do bigger and better next year. And the last thing I want to bring up is, there's an election on Tuesday, November 4th. Glendale has an election. There's all kinds of bond issues, overrides, and all kinds of stuff. Today was the last day to mail your ballot. If you don't get your ballot in the mail by whatever the last time your mail's getting picked up, you need to hand-deliver your ballot to any one of the voting locations you can find under the City Clerks tab, Elections tab, on the city of Glendale website. If the ballot's still sitting on your counter, it's not too late to vote. Please vote, but you do need to hand-deliver your ballot after whatever time the cutoff time is the mailbox near you today. So, that being said, the next thing on our agenda is citizens' comments. Council makes this opportunity available to citizens to bring information and business before the council that is not included on the printed agenda. First person up, and I apologize, I'm not sure I'm going to have your name right. Tony Waru, is that right? Warren, oh, it's an N. Okay, Tony Warren. I couldn't hear her. Is she here? He? Did you want to speak? Please come to the podium and give us your name and your district if you know it, and if you don't know your district... and if you don't know your district, give us your cross streets, you don't have to give us your address. And you have three minutes, Tony. Get right up next to the microphone so we can hear you.
Okay.
Perfect, perfect.
All right. I wanted to talk about, I've just recently become aware that there's talk of locating a fire station in our Mission Park, which is directly across the street from my house. I've lived there for forty-seven years, was very concerned about it. There's a very limited parking in the area. It's kind of, if, I call it, well, there isn't direct east and west movement from that park. The only direct road is north and south, which is Forty-seventh Avenue, so you can get to either Olive or Peoria to get to a main thoroughfare. And on the east side, it's kind of landlocked because it comes to, there's just a little strip of what I think is Forty-sixth Avenue. I don't know if it's a block long, two blocks long. And on the south side, there's just housing, on the north side, there's just fences and housing. So, and there's school buses that stop six times a day during the school year. Little kids walk to and from Sunset School in one direction and bigger kids walk to and from Apollo High School in the other direction. It's already a congested area and I think that this might add to that congestion, the fact that there's speculation about a community center. People can come in and use gym equipment, things like, of that nature. I think all of that leads to more traffic in the area and I don't know how it can be handled. In fact, there's another problem, as you come out of the park on the southwest side, you go into a development of townhomes, it's an HOA, there's approximately a hundred and fifty-seven homes in there. And that's very much a lot of traffic all the time. They don't have adequate parking inside of that development, so they park actually in the bike lanes along Forty-seventh Avenue. I've called numerous times to the city, I've taken pictures of the vehicles, sent them in. That doesn't seem to be a concern. But I can't, I can't, that is a very, very congested little area and I would say somebody needs to look at that. I'm also concerned about the noise and the lights changing the feeling and what we enjoy as a quiet neighborhood now, it's a very, most of the res, I've been there forty-eight years and I was not the first. There's a lot of people been there for many, many years, very quiet, we're old and cranky and...
I'm going to need you to wrap it up, Tony.
Okay, the other thing is, Mission Park is a retention area, we already have, when, just the little bit of rain that we had recently, there was water halfway across, up to my door, across my lawn, and it lays in the backyard and I call that Lake Hatcher. And if there's less retention in Mission Park, something needs to be done. And I know that if things go the way everyone hopes they'll go today, or this election, there might be something, but that certainly would need to be addressed before we would want to fill that with another fire, a fire station. I think Horizon Park and Sunset Park ought to be considered.
Thank you, Tony.
Certainly welcome.
Roy Garay.
Madam Vice Mayor, Council, Roy Garay, Ocatillo District. As residents of Glendale, we all share a commitment to keeping our neighborhoods safe, clean, and welcoming. When a resident takes the time to report a code compliance concern, they're not causing trouble, they're showing pride in their community and helping the city do its job. I believe the current approach is misguided. Every resident, whether they report one issue or ten, deserves to be heard. Their concerns should be taken seriously. Restricting that ability silences the voices that care deeply about our city and it discourages residents from speaking up when something needs attention. Courts have generally found that governments can regulate process but not suppress participation. That means cities can streamline how complaints are handled, but they cannot shut down the people's right to be heard. Our city government should focus on listening to the people and taking care of the complaints that they report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garay. John Doyle.
Hi, my name's John Doyle, I'm a resident in the Cactus District. And I'm here in regards to the proposed or whatever fire station, just a couple of quick comments. That's a very busy park in the wintertime and it's awesome because of the kids with the Pee-wee football, soccer, T-ball, all this stuff, that would all be gone or changed seriously. And I think the neighborhood will change in a negative way. But one big thing, and I don't see how you can get around it anyway, is the noise of a fire truck. It's a lot of power, a lot of weight, even going slow, which fire trucks don't. They're going to make a lot of noise and it's going to be noticeable, so. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Warren Wolfong. Good evening, Warren, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Warren Wolfong, in Ocatillo District. I was on the, I was on the planning commission for four years, I was on the code review committee for two and a half years. I have invested years in improving this city. I am one of the individuals that was using the code compliance department with excessive complaints. Why? Because they're out there. They never go away, they're constant. When I look at this, I look at it this way. I do, I appreciate what the code department is planning to do with the proactive agenda. But when a resident submits complaints and to say it's excessive or whatever, is that not a form of proactive agenda? Is that not the same thing? You've got eight inspectors driving through the neighborhoods looking for violations when you have individuals, residents submitting complaints, giving them the address, and giving the violations and they don't even have to go look for it. What is wrong with that plan? Tell me, which one is more efficient? Which one would benefit the city more? I'm looking for an answer because what was said today was really another, let's hope for the best. We can't get to where they want to be until you fix the problem that's in place right now. And that's the way it is. You've got a problem, and I'll give you an example, I sent everyone emails, thirty violations, I went down three streets, thirty violations in ten minutes. How long is that going to take somebody who is proactive or code inspectors to address those? And that was only three streets. Now, if I did all my whole neighborhood in a mile, we're talking probably hundreds. So, how are we going to fix it if we've got code inspectors being, trying to be proactive when they're looking for them and when we can actually give them the information, which is more proactive than what they're trying to do? So, I have one more, one more statement to make. And like I said, I am the individual that did it, okay? I'm one of them. And Councilman Guzman, you kind of really rubbed me the wrong way when you made the comment, we're trying to change this for one individual. I'm an individual that cares for my neighborhood and cares for the city, all I want to do is improve it. Is that the same reason why you got elected? Aren't you an individual why you went and got elected for this? Aren't we the same? But you were almost sounding like you were annoyed or bothered by this and that really bothered me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfong. James Dibler, you're next. Good evening, James.
Good evening. Hi, my name is James Dibler. I am a resident of Phoenix, Arizona. Today, I'm speaking to you regarding a doctor's street. On Saturday, November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at eight AM, I'm hosting Further Avenue Friends Adopt a Street Cleaner Event at Bussa Donuts at Further Avenue and Downlight Avenue in Phoenix, Arizona. Finally, I will invite the community to keep your street clean within the city of Phoenix and Glendale. There will be free donuts and coffee at the event. I'm hoping everybody can come to the event. Glendale residents are walking to the event. Thank you for taking the time and considering this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Dibler. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.